Attending remotely are all members of the Board of Selectmen, myself Christine Hoyt, Vice Chair Rick Blanchard, attending by phone is Selectman John Duval and Selectman Joe Novak. Also attending this evening, we have Town Administrator Jay Green, Deb Dunlap Administrative Assistant to the Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen, as well as Becky Ferguson in the Community Development Office. We also have Jack Arino from I Berkshires attending. We have posted today's agenda in accordance with open meeting law, which included the call in information for today's meeting. And despite our best efforts, if we're not able to provide for real time access for the public to participate, a recording of this meeting can be made available upon request as this meeting is being recorded using the Zoom platform, which you all heard chime in just a moment ago saying that it is now being recorded. As we are participating remotely, please note that all votes taken during this meeting will be by a roll call vote. I'll state the member's name and ask for their vote for each vote necessarily today. First item of business agenda is the applicable minutes for March 17th, 2021. If you would like, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and make a motion.
I'll make a motion for approve or waive a reading of the minutes and improvement as provided for March 17th, 2021.
I have a motion by Member Blanchard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Duval. It is a roll call vote. Well, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, it is a roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And it's a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. The only item on this agenda for new business is a reserve fund transfer request for 65 Park Street Accessibility Project for the Registry of Deeds Building at approximately $41,000. Before we get into that, we do have somebody who just joined us by phone. Last four digits, 0483. Who am I speaking with?
Deb Dunlap.
Okay, Deb. Okay. I see that Becky is on the call. Is Becky going to walk us through this? Or Jay, are you going to introduce it?
I'll set the stage and then we'll turn it over to Becky for the technical conversation. So, good evening, everybody. As you see on the agenda tonight, we have a reserve fund transfer request for 65 Park Street, better known as Old Town Hall, former Town Hall, current home to the Registry of Deeds Building. I'm going to read a memorandum that I submitted to the board and will submit, assuming it passes this evening, to the Finance Committee as well, which gives a little bit of background and then I'll turn it over to Becky for the technical aspects of it. "Over the several years, the Town of Adams has made various renovations to the former Town Hall at 65 Park Street, now occupied by the Northern Berkshire Registry of Deeds. These improvements have included window and door replacements, facade repairs, and the installation of a ramp at the front entrance to make the building accessible in order to comply with applicable ADA regulations." As explained in more detail with the attached communication and subsequent presentation from the Community Development Office, the next planned improvement for that building is the installation of a chairlift and alteration to the front doors. Now, this project is primarily funded through an $80,000 Massachusetts Office on Disability Grant and an additional $38,000 allocated from Town Capital Funds, I believe, in fiscal year 2011. Although planned for calendar year 2020, the first round of bids did exceed any available funds. At that time, we decided to collectively delay the project. We requested an extension from MOD on the use of the funds. And Becky and the Community Development staff worked with the design team to attempt to reduce costs. And simultaneously, we sought additional funding, including funds from the Registry of Deeds itself, and then eventually rebid the project, which we just did. Once again, on the second time around, the bid estimates did come back higher than available funds. This project is a complicated project. Becky can answer some of those questions if you'd like. And we assume that the costs are going to continue to go to increase on the way up the longer we wait. So, we need to make a decision at this point as to whether or not to abandon the project, return the grant money, or proceed forward. So, in doing, we attempted to take a look at, alright, what will it take in terms of dollars to be able to move forward and accomplish the project? And that is what is before you this evening. Approximately $40,000 is needed to finish the project. This amount will allow for a complete project covering the funding gap and allowing for any unforeseen costs that come up. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Becky and she can walk you through the project itself.
Sure. So, the project itself is, you know, we had the architect look at it in a lot of different ways to try to come up with some creative solutions. There just aren't many options for that space. What the project will do is change out the very first set of front doors. When you walk in the front doors, there's a very small set of stairs. I think it's just three or four steps that go into the registry office. And then there's another set of doors that go in down to a hallway. So, on that first set of stairs, they will break it up. Half of it will still remain stairs and the other half will be a chairlift. And then the second set of doors will be removed entirely. So, this would make the space fully ADA accessible, including the ramp that goes up to the front doors. It's a really tight space and there's going to have to be some structural changes to make it all happen, as well as some tricky electrical work that has to go through the floor and a concrete, very thick concrete slab into the basement. So, it seems like a small project, but it's actually pretty complicated just because of the limits of the space. We did get two bids back on this latest round and you have the numbers for the lowest bid. The second lowest was $25,000 higher. And there is an option not to do the front door, but that would make it not fully ADA accessible. And if we wanted to be in full compliance, we would have to come back and do that later. But that would be an option if we wanted to take out a small piece of the project. Any questions from anyone on it?
Thanks, Becky. I will start with if Member Blanchard had any questions.
Yeah, let me unmute myself here. Did we look at coming into the building any other way?
We looked at it a lot of ways. And again, it's like, the only other option would be create access through the police side of it and that's really not a possibility either. We looked at putting a ramp in, but because it's such a small space, the ramp would have to like, go way to the back of the building to get the heights correct or the elevations correct on that. So, we really tried. We actually went through two engineers. We started out with EDM on this and then switched to Barry Architects and both of them came to the same conclusions. And our town building inspector has looked at it closely too and he came to the same conclusions.
Okay. That's about all the questions I have.
Okay. Member Duval, any questions?
I just have one. Is the latest round of contractor estimates of bidding is, how long is that good for? If we go to the Finance Committee and we do receive the funds, is it going to be the same pricing that they've put in?
Yes, it'll be the same pricing, but we only have, in all honesty, according to procurement guidelines, 30 days to get back to those contractors and we have about two weeks left. So, we'd have to make that decision and be able to respond to the contractors quickly to lock those prices in.
Okay. How quickly, Madam Chair, would we be able to meet with the Finance Committee? Have you talked to the Finance Committee Chair?
The Finance Committee Chair has scheduled a meeting for Monday, April 5th. You're just a couple of days away.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Member Novak, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question or two. Now that the ramp was set in place earlier on the outside, that put the handicap accessibility, I believe, into motion. So, I really think that we put ourselves in a spot where we don't really have any other choice but to do the work. That's my feeling. And I'm sure that if you were to look at the number of people with a handicap that has needed to get into the building, I'm sure it would be a very, very, very minute percentage. But once you come to compliance with accessibility through the Disabilities Act, I really think that this really needs to go forward. I think, should we not do it? And someone who is disabled complains about it that, you know, we're putting ourselves in a tough situation because we've kind of, once again, to reiterate, spending the time and money to put the ramp outside leading up and then you get to the top and there's, if you have a disability, that's as far as you can go. So, this has been ongoing for many years and I think it's just time to put an end to it and get it to the point where people with disabilities can enter into it.
Thank you, Joe. Jay, one question for you. The reserve fund, is it healthy enough to accept a transfer of up to $41,000?
Yes, we're at maximum 175 as appropriated by last year's town meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
I think just the next piece is from Becky to say exactly what number she feels comfortable with that the board can approve this evening.
I think that $40,000 would be a good number. I think we can anticipate some complications and that'll give us enough to do it completely.
Okay. So, that would be asking for a reserve fund transfer of up to $40,000? Or you need it to be exactly 40?
I think we need to be.
Sorry, go ahead.
40, please.
40,000. Okay. So, I would be looking for a motion from the board to approve a reserve fund transfer of $40,000 for the 65 Park Street Accessibility Project.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
He beat my unmuting. I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to bring up as far as the funding goes and our transfer. I know this might be a little bit of a aside, but I had heard today that the lottery had its third biggest amount of money that they've made over 900 and something million dollars for local aid. And I don't know if this is the proper time to ask, but have we heard anything from the lottery as far as monies that would be brought forth to our community?
I have not, but we can look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on this item before us? Hearing none, it is a roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. And as mentioned, that will go forward to the Finance Committee, who is scheduled to meet on Monday, April 5th at 6:00 PM. That concludes the business for this meeting. So, I will ask for an adjournment of the meeting and then we will call to order the workshop right after. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
The yes from Christine and nobody hang up. We are adjourned from the meeting at 6:16 PM and I will call to order the Board of Selectmen Workshop for Wednesday, March 31st at 6:16 PM. I will just add for the viewer on the phone, we do have a couple of people who have joined us in addition to all of the others I mentioned at the start of the meeting. We also have Mark Malloy from Berkshire Regional Planning Commission and Donna Season of Community Development who joined us as well. So, I will break down to new business on the workshop agenda. And the first item is Local Rapid Recovery Planning Assistance Grant. An overview of this grant. You want to see that up before you introduce Mark?
You cut out, all I heard was, did I hear my name?
Yep. I'm just asking if you wanted to, yeah, if you wanted to introduce the first item under new business, which is the Local Rapid Recovery Planning Assistance Grant, and then.
Yes, I'm happy to. So, again, good evening, everybody. Mark, thank you for joining us. Becky, thanks for your presentation. You can sign off unless you wanted to hang around for the workshop, particularly the Local Rapid Recovery Assistance. So, everybody knows this was a grant that was applied for in a joint capacity between the Town of Adams, Pro Adams, and Downtown Adams. The money goes to the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, which is the actual execution body for what the grant will entail and Mark will go through all that. And we've asked Becky Ferguson and our Community Development Department to run point for us on the town side. So, this is a three-way joint application. So, there's three parties to this. And I think once Mark and Becky give their presentation, or I should say, Mark gives his presentation, I think everybody will get a good idea of what this is and what the goals are of it and at the end of it, what's the takeaway, what can we do with it. So, Mark, thanks for joining us tonight and I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Jay. Good evening, everyone. So, as Jay mentioned, I'm Mark Malloy. I'm with the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. And the Regional Planning Commission was hired as the plan facilitator for the Downtown Adams Local Rapid Recovery Plan Project. As Jay mentioned, this was applied for by Downtown Adams. It's supported from Adams and Pro Adams. This is a statewide program that is moving very quickly. Applications were just due in December, January. And it is designed to come up with a plan to, or how a community can rapidly recover from the pandemic economically. So, are there things we can do locally to help spur the economy when the pandemic is done? It is very prescriptive at the state level. They're providing us with timelines and forms and requirements that we have to follow with the support of the three partners. This is a data-heavy plan. There is numerous data components, which I will go into in a minute. The state will be collecting all of this data from these communities throughout the state and creating a statewide plan on how the state can really recover their small, their communities. At this point, there's no financial assistance to the communities. It's just for creation of the plan through the facilitators. But they hope that as they pull together the statewide plan, they will identify things that they can start creating funding for the local communities. So, this plan is focusing on the downtown part of Adams, Park Street, Summer Street, Depot, Pleasant, Spring, Myrtle, and a little bit of East Huzick Street. We're not going up Hooty or down Hooty outside of that downtown area. Right now, there is two components that are going on. One of them is a business survey. Downtown Adams has been promoting a survey over the last week. This survey closes April 12th, so only another two weeks. This survey is only for business owners and managers within that downtown area. So, they are direct, Downtown Adams is directly reaching out to all of those business owners. In addition to that, there is a, some data collection that we are doing at Regional Planning. We're collecting a number of socioeconomic data points on the town, on the downtown area. We are doing some fieldwork starting tomorrow afternoon, so hopefully the snow is not too bad. And we'll be looking at physical condition of the downtown area, public and private, and, you know, seeing what's working, what's not working, what could be improved. We will be pulling all this together by the end of April to middle of May. At that time, we'll have a public meeting where we go over the findings of the data and the survey and kind of, this is the situation as we look at it. We will also ask the public who may be at that meeting if they have any ideas for potential projects in the downtown. When we talk about projects, we're talking about short-term actionable items. We're not looking for long-term, you know, we want to completely redo Summer Street. I know we just did that a few years ago, but we're not looking at that scale of things. It's adding some lights, redoing some signage, stuff like that. After that public meeting, the team, which is again the three partners in BRPC, will be developing a fuller list of potential project ideas. These project ideas will cover public infrastructure. So, it may look at sidewalks and ramps. It may look at parks and parking lots, lighting, wayfinding signage. It may cover private infrastructure. So, signage and facade, lighting of businesses. Does anything need to be done to business to make them look a bit better? It can include administrative recommendations such as, you know, do we need to work on formalizing Downtown Adams or Pro Adams or work on the relationship between the three organizations, spelling out who does what? It could also be items that are more regulatory. Are there any zoning changes that may be potentially needed for the downtown area to, again, revitalize it, to get businesses in there quicker after the pandemic is over? Once we come up with these potential recommendations, we will go back to the public and get their thoughts on these recommendations and try and prioritize it down to a list of around 10 recommendations. That's what we're required to submit to the state. After that meeting, which will be mid-June, we will be compiling the plan detailed, a lot of detailed information on each of the potential recommendations. Mostly, the plan is just the 10 recommendations. There's not a lot of other items in the plan. And then in August sometime, we will have a third public meeting where we actually go over the plan and the recommended action items. So, it's a short project. It will be done in less than six months. There's a lot of upfront work in the field and gathering data and there's a heavy section of working with the public in developing these projects. So, we'll definitely be back in front of the select board over the next few months. So, that's all I have. If there's any questions, I'm open to answering this.
Sure. And Jay from the town, Becky is the point person, correct? Okay. So, Becky, I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add?
No, that was great. There's nothing I want to add. We'll try to keep everybody in the town updated as we go. So, you know, if we want to discuss the best way to do that as we, as these plans are developed and meetings are happening. But that was a very thorough overview.
Mark said it a couple of times, I think. So. Any questions for Mark? Rick, I'll start with you.
I have not.
Okay. John?
Mark, who in the end is responsible to develop the plan and to submit the plan itself?
So, Regional Planning will be the ones developing the plan and submitting it. Again, it's pretty much just those 10 recommendations, but we will be working with all three of the partners in town to make sure all of you agree with all of the recommendations. We don't want to be submitting something that you may not agree with or one of the other partners may not agree with. So, it will be us submitting it. Downtown Adams is technically the applicant and they're kind of responsible for it as well, but we'll be including all of you.
Okay. Does Downtown Adams and Pro Adams, do they have a person identified as the go-to person?
So, for Downtown Adams, it's Steven Stenson. However, he has a whole team of people who are going to be working on this. And then Pro Adams, it's Ray Gargan. But again, there's a couple of people with Pro Adams who will also be working on this project.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Joe, any questions?
I guess more of a comment. This type of study has been done a number of times for Downtown Adams and I have nothing against doing it. I hope it becomes beneficial. A lot of these studies that we've had, they just go by the wayside because recommendations are good, but if you don't have the finances to carry them out, then they're just words without substance. But I just hope something can come about it and it's just not something that is compiled and that's it. So, thank you, Mark, for your work and I hope, once again, that something comes from it because these studies have gone on for quite a long time throughout Adams and other communities. So, thank you for your work and that's all I have, just a comment.
Can I just provide some clarification on something? To Joe's point, for the previous plans on downtown, we will be trying to gather those plans from the town, looking at all those recommendations and seeing what we can incorporate into this plan. So, this isn't a totally standalone plan. We will incorporate the previous stuff. And then I'll just mention again, these are supposed to be short-term actionable items that we can do relatively easily. Yes, it does depend on funding some of it and the state, again, hopefully, will be providing funding to implement these projects as they compile the data statewide. So, hopefully, you know, the funding will be there. We all acknowledge that that is the big obstacle for all of this stuff.
Thank you for the clarification, Mark. Okay. If there's nothing else on that item, we can move to the second item under new business. We'll move on to item B, which is 26 Commercial Street, also known as the mobile station. And I'll ask the Town Administrator to give us an update.
Mark, thank you very much and Becky, thank you for your efforts with that grant. Moving on to 26 Commercial Street, to set the background so everybody knows, town meeting last year authorized the Board of Selectmen to investigate the, essentially, the acquisition of 26 Commercial Street, known as the mobile station next to Huzick Valley Elementary, the Plunkett Building, and across from Halfflinger House. Over the last several months since we received authorization by town meeting to begin to look at those steps, the Community Development Department has been working in the background to assess the property and try to give the board some numbers as to what it's going to take to, one, remediate the property based on any environmental issues and, two, demolish the property and, three, also, what it will take to put the property into a state of good repair based on whatever the board would like to see happen with it. So, we're now at the point where Donna will present. We feel as though we've got enough information to present to you this evening. There's no paperwork associated with it. It's just verbal. And we'll be looking just from consensus from the board. If you'd like us to proceed further into the next steps of the project. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Donna.
Okay, thank you. So, as Jay said, we've continued to work both with our property, the property owner of 26 Commercial Street and the town's environmental consultant, TRC. TRC has now prepared a detailed scope of work that's necessary to clean up the property. As you recall, I think the last time we talked, we knew that the cleanup work would focus on the removal of the three 10,000 gallon underground storage tanks. And then there's a fourth underground storage tank of about 1,000 gallons, which would be with home heating fuel. TRC has identified the estimate for the tank removal at about $65,700. I think when we talked to the board last, we were looking at a 45. a 45 to 50 or 50 to $60,000 range. So it's relatively right in there. After the tanks are removed, there will be sampling that is necessary to undertake and then laboratory testing. So there's about an additional $10,000 on that. The testing and the lab samples, we think we can address the cost of that and TRC labor by, they will be required to be an onsite monitor during the tank removal. All of that work would be fundable under our existing Brownfields Assessment Grant, which we have to close out September 30th. So we think we can get that done. We also for the, to actually use the site, as we've talked, once the tanks are removed, we would need additional funds to remove the building, to demolish the building. There'd be site work to make it a good pad site. And then whatever paving, we would need to make it a parking lot or drop-off area for students of the elementary school. Currently, we're working with VHB, who is our Route Eight engineer. We're trying to see if we can dovetail the work of the proposed parking lot with the work of Route Eight. And we're also, we have a pending conversation with EPA to see if the town is able to put money in for the tank removal. Would EPA provide funds for the demolition? So it would be about similar amounts of funding. So instead of the town ponying up the entire 100 to 120,000 to address both the tank removal and the demolition, we're hoping that that cost could roughly be split with cost sharing with EPA. So that remains to be seen, but I wanted the board to know that is what we're working toward. We've worked with Town Council. He has prepared a purchase and sale agreement. That will be shared now with the property owner and his attorney. And then I think we need to, with the board's permission, enter into negotiations on that PNS and then bring final draft to the board for its review. So I think everything is moving along. We still hold out that kind of September perfect date of trying to complete this project or as much as we can. It's still a challenge at this point. We don't know if we'll be able to make it, but I wanted the board to know that that's what we have in mind. Any questions?
Thank you, Donna. Appreciate that information. I just wanted to just ask a question. So it was $10,000 for the sampling and lab testing and then the TRC labor onsite. Those costs would all be under the Brownfields Assessment Grant?
Correct.
Yeah. Total roughly?
So that total is about $12,000.
Okay. So the labor's roughly two?
Actually, the labor, I have it in front of me. The labor is 9,500, the laboratory testing is 3,600, and then there's another $1,000 that are identified for other direct costs. So my math might be a little off. That's like probably more like 13 or 14.
Yep, it is. Okay.
But it's all going to be covered by EPA, so that's good.
As you were talking, I was trying to write down numbers and like attribute them to all the things that you said. So I couldn't write as fast. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Member Blanchard to see if he has any questions.
Only one. The concept for this drop-off slash parking lot is going to include the existing parking lot for the school?
Yes, it would. We have some challenges. As you know, the garage is into that bank for Liberty Street. So we need to look at that. We're hoping that it's not the building that's holding up the bank. So, but, but yes, we want to, it needs to be seamless. And again, I have to confess at this point, I might be simplifying, but as we begin to work on the design process, we would certainly share that with board members. I think it will be appropriate to share it with obviously the, the school personnel and probably traffic commission as well.
Right. And this is probably putting the cart before the horse here, but we may have to look at attaching that parcel to the school parcel. So if it ever does get sold in the future, there isn't complications would happen to two separate parcels?
Okay. Good point. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I had.
John?
No questions. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Joe?
I have no questions, but I would hope that prior to this work that we could try to write out some other type of grant for more money from the Brownfields. I think it's, the scope of the work is right up the alley for Brownfield's money. And that's certainly something that Donna's expertise and Becky could really work on to see if and where the money is for something like that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. If there's nothing else on 26 Commercial Street, we'll move on to item C, which is the review of the current marijuana bylaws.
Thank you. As I may have mentioned to board members previously, over the last several months, we've seen a lot of interest in Adams and from a variety of different businesses and a variety of different locations. But one of the things that has come to light is there appears to be an interest from the marijuana industry in locating in Adams and in particular, in locating in buildings that are within the industrial park or the IP zone, which is the Adams Industrial Park, former Print Works property. However, for anyone that's been following along with a proposed development project at the Burke property, our present zoning marijuana bylaws do not allow that type of use in that zone. And we've turned away now, I want to say, and Donna, you can jump in because I'm going to turn it over to Donna to walk us through the current zoning and walk us through the proposed change. But I want to say at least two to three, I've had at least two or three inquiries, probably one that I know for sure has gone to a neighboring community because we weren't able to accommodate them. So that's why we asked to workshop this item this evening, get the board's consensus and input as to how they would like us, how the board would like us to proceed, whether or not you would entertain changing and moving this forward through the planning board process, et cetera, modified accordingly. Donna?
Thank you. And I would just say that it's two to three in this year, 2021. It was probably three to five last year, 2020, 2019. It was another three to five. The buildings in the corporate park, as the board knows, the old Pellet Fuel building in the park has been vacant for a number of years. That has been the focus of many inquiries by marijuana businesses looking for a building. We've had inquiries about the vacant lot. We've had inquiries more recently, as Jay was saying, with the MRA Labs building. And in each case, we've had to say, no, it's not permitted. The only marijuana business that is permitted under our current bylaw for industrial park zoning is the laboratory testing. This, this issue, you know, was obviously discussed when the planning board was working on the bylaw, latter part of 2017, and then when it was adopted in 2018. The planning board, I think, basically felt this was a good first effort. They wanted to have some experience with marijuana businesses in the community. But there was always the desire to go back and tweak the bylaw and make it better over time. I think the idea with the industrial park is that, you know, again, they just didn't have enough information about potential impacts. And so that's why it was initially hands-off. What, I guess we're at a point where we don't really have a lot of experience, but we certainly have seen the experience in other communities. And I think what we're learning from our one business that is closest to opening LC Squared, I think the last meeting we had with them, I was really struck by how he emphasized there's just a lack of product out there. We are seeing that, evidence of that by the number of inquiries we're having for people looking to do cultivation facilities. So I think it's something we wanted to first discuss with the board. Does this seem appropriate? I think there still should be some limitations in the IP zones. For example, it probably, for the interior industrial park, it probably would, we would limit it to manufacturing and cultivation. I think it doesn't make sense to have something that is off the corridor to, in a business park situation, be open for retail. But certainly, I mean, you could argue that. I'm just, I'm just suggesting things that I've been thinking about. But certainly, the park, it has manufacturing in it now. It's research and development, cultivation. I think those are appropriate uses. And I would suggest we revisit our bylaw. We ask our planning board to undertake this. And depending on how quickly we can address it, it might be ready in time for town meeting.
Thank you, Donna. I appreciate the overview. Before we dive into anything with the bylaws or asking the board for their consensus, I do need to just mention that Member Duval has informed me that he does need to recuse himself from this conversation. John, if you wanted to hang up, you could do so. And then we'll get a message to you to call back in for the budget discussion. My apologies for not flipping those on the agenda accordingly.
That's no problem. It's based on my employer's legal counsel recommendation. I work for a federal contractor where marijuana is still legal at the federal level. So I'll just go on mute and now just join back when this is done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. Continue. I'm sorry. You wanted it into?
Sure. So I think probably the simplest thing is I believe the board members have the, it's just a simple chart showing where marijuana businesses are allowed now. As I believe the board knows, any type of marijuana businesses, business is permitted by right in our industrial zone. That's distinct from the IP industrial park zone. Industrial property, although we do have some locations within downtown area, the majority of the industrial zoning is along the northern Route Eight corridor, both sides of the roadway. So, and that, as you know, has been where we have seen activity, LC Squared, and then the question mark, former Mission, Massachusetts property that we are finding out about. So. So, and then it's allowed through a special permit process. Marijuana retail is allowed through a special permit process in B2. But other than that, it's restricted. There are no other opportunities for marijuana businesses in the community.
You wanted to open up for some questions or? Okay. Thank you. Member Blanchard?
Not as quick with the mute tonight. No, I agree. Retail in there would probably be a bad idea because the traffic flow would be, I think, an issue in the industrial park.
Right.
My only question is, is my right in the industry area, industrial areas, isn't it an industrial park already an industrial area?
It is. But it, you know, the town, I believe this, I don't know the history of the town's zoning bylaw about this particular matter. I suspect that when the Adams Corporate Park was created in the late 80s and early 90s, they established restrictive covenants. The Northern Berkshire Industrial Park and Development Corporation owned the property. They managed the property. They sold lots within the corporate park. They came, they developed the restrictive covenants. And I believe they may have approached the town that to work with them and to facilitate that this park would be special, that properties, you know, instead of a kind of your more messy industrial business or use, that this was more of a R and D park, a business park. Yes, manufacturing was allowed, but it was really focused on job creation and that, that, that type of thing. So they wanted to have that special aspect of it. And I think that's how the industrial park zoning came about to complement and help implement the restrictive covenants that the IPDC was trying to implement.
Now, for zoning, is that considered a B3?
No, there's a, there is a zoning classification, IP industrial park. This is the only location, Print Works Drive. You know, this is the only location where the IP zoning exists in the town of Adams. I'm sorry I didn't include a map or anything, but.
Okay. So according to this thing, the it does special permit for a couple of them already. Are we looking to just change?
So it allows, currently in our bylaw, a marijuana independent testing laboratory could apply for a special permit. But that is the only identified marijuana business use that could go in the, you know, the IP zone now. And it's only through a special permit. And I have to say, in the three years of implementation, we have not had the first request for a laboratory testing facility, unfortunately.
Okay. I think that kind of clears it up for me.
Joe, any questions? And Rick, I'm going to put the link to the zoning map in the chat box if you wanted to pull that up. Okay. And for anybody else who's on this call, it's there. I was trying to share my screen. It got really complicated. Joe, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to concur with both Donna and Rick about not having the facility as for sales. It's better served the way it is for trucks coming in because there'll be, should we change the bylaw, there'll be trucks coming in for transportation to and from. And I think we should do what we can as rapidly as we can. The restricted covenants, at the time, those were put into place. There was no talk about marijuana. I mean, this is something relatively new. And I believe early on, we were the first community to show interest, but we've lagged behind for reasons I don't know other than maybe getting the wrong people interested early on. But we're losing a lot of revenue. And there is a good point that was brought up. There is such a demand for medical marijuana and particularly recreational marijuana that they're unable to really keep up with the needs. And I think that's what's causing it a little bit harder for companies that want to get into existence to go through the cannabis commission because they're worried about, you know, being able to supply them with what they would need. to go through the cannabis commission because they're worried about, you know, being able to supply them with what they would need. So my hope is, as I brought this up many, many years ago, is that, you know, we're losing revenue and the quicker we can get something together. And as Donna said, I wasn't aware of it until Don had just mentioned how many people have inquired into, you know, finding a place for cultivation. And it appears to me from what I've read and what I've seen that is a lot of communities aren't so happy about outside growing. A few communities have allowed small plots, but most of them have gone against that. So cultivation, in my opinion, is going to be, most of it's going to be done within closed areas. So I just would like to get it changed. I mean, industrial park, this is a blooming industry. This is probably the fastest growing industry with the most profit to be made for communities. So, and another thing that this information that I received, I didn't know anything about this. I mean, I just got this and I didn't even know that we were going to have a workshop with all this stuff on the agenda. So I get it and it's hard to digest it. And I, you know, I just wish that there was more of time to look at information that we're going to discuss prior to a meeting because it's just hard to get it, you know, the day before and not even know it's going to be on the workshop agenda. You know, it just came as a surprise, but you know, I don't know why. But in short, I'll just say that I would really like for Donna, whoever's in charge of changing the zoning bylaw or the planning board, whoever is to do it, I believe you mentioned a planning board, that we get on it as quick as we can before, you know, we, we lose the possibility of getting an anchor business. So I'm all for it.
If I may, Madam Chairman. So I think what would be helpful if the board would like to move forward with this is I can prepare a letter for the, from the board to the planning board requesting that they work with community development staff to revisit the bylaws with the hopes that we could have something ready for our next town meeting or the annual town meeting. So I could have that prepared for your next meeting and at that point you could vote on it. Is that appropriate?
Yes, that seems appropriate and that would, that's how workshops are utilized is to present information or to discuss it and then to move it on to another meeting for action. And that would be very appropriate and I will add it to the agenda for next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, with that, need a motion?
Nope.
Okay.
Workshop. And so Donna is requesting if that could be an action item at our next meeting.
Okay, just checking because I want to make sure we get it going as quick as we can. So that's just an agreement right now that we're making and Donna will bring it to us for our blessing or not, right?
That is correct. Donna asked.
Okay.
Which would be taken up next week at our meeting. Yep, thank you. If people can take a look at the bylaws and they have a week's time to take a look at that and make a decision. Thank you, Donna. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Let me check and see if John is back with us as I am checking. John will be able to join us again for the conversation. Jay, if you want to go ahead and take the lead on just giving an overview on the fiscal twenty budget process.
Sure. So this is our kickoff to the fiscal twenty-two budget season. I hope I share as much joy as the rest of us to, to say that this is, as of right now, we're on path, on course for a June town meeting unlike last year, which was uncharted territory. So we are in our normal course as always within the municipal budget cycle. We've had several workshop meetings with the, the budget subcommittee. Budget subcommittees provided me the guidelines that they like us as town staff as we develop the budget to work with this year. We received all of our fixed costs. We have the preliminary state local aid numbers and we've done all of our estimating as we, we possibly can. And of course, I, I always caution everybody municipal budgeting is estimating. The key is, is how sharp and how good is the data that we can use. So this evening, you've received or will receive tomorrow the global or the budget overview, which is also known as the Roman numeral pages of your, your budget book. This gives the board a good snapshot as to what the budget looks like. We'll be able to finish up the, the detailed pages of the budget, which shows the departmental items probably by the end of this week, early next week. And we'll get that all disseminated to the selectmen as well as to the finance committee. And I believe the chairman will be going through also this evening what that schedule looks like. So I'll just run through these numbers with, with everybody, just the, the big numbers, the highlight numbers for everybody. The proposed personal services spending for this year is approximately $6,487,000. This funds all of the salaries and benefits for the paid positions for all of our part-time people, et cetera. And that's going to be an estimated spending increase of approximately 1.25% over last year. So that is only showing a 1.25% increase over fiscal year twenty-one. The operating expenses for fiscal year twenty-two are estimated to be $2,322,484. This funds the daily operational expenses, including utilities, fuel, repairs, maintenance, supplies, services, programming, engineering, et cetera. And this spending in this category is a decrease from fiscal year twenty-twenty-one of about minus 0.24%. Regarding capital this year, we, as always, try to put together a capital plan using the free cash certifications that we have from the government, excuse me, from the Commonwealth, once they certify our, our free cash number. This year, the free cash number was not as robust as it has been in the past. That's simply a function of the slower economic conditions that we were in this year. So the state certified our free cash number at $839,294. By internal spending policy, we try to keep that to about 50%. So we spent about programmed in, I should say, or seeking appropriation of $419,442 for a free cash usage. $250,000 is the board always asks to be done, is put to offset the tax rate. And then we have an $86,000 court judgment that needs to be paid out. That comes off of free cash and that leaves us with approximately $83,000 for a capital plan for this year. So we have programmed in a cruiser, marked cruiser replacement for the police department at $55,000. We have not purchased a new marked vehicle at least in two or three years. I've been here too. We haven't done that. So we are definitely due to introduce a new vehicle into the fleet. The library building, Holly Jacob is seeking $10,000 to do some various small building projects around on the building. $10,000 is programmed in in order to provide body repairs to our John Deere bucket loader, which is stationed at the highway department. Mechanically, the unit is in good shape. However, as with most vehicles in this environment, the body needs some work. So we feel that's a good cost investment in there in order to maintain that, that item. And then we have about $3,000 programmed for, to either replace or purchase additional small equipment for our public buildings management team. Those would be our two custodians. So that would involve the snow blower, lawnmower, et cetera. And then we have $5,000 programmed as we generally do for the replacement of small mobile equipment for our cemetery, parks and grounds flood control team as well. So that is an $83,000 capital program for this year. Those are the items that we've, we've programmed in. There's, as always, there's, we allow $150,000 for abatements and exemptions. So most of the items are the same as always. We have not adjusted many of these. There's detail sheets in here, overall detail sheets for the departments. We'll give you the individual items next week. You'll see that our local aid number is 2.8 million now at this point. As I cautioned everyone before, that number comes from the governor's H1 budget. We have yet to receive figures that come from the House Ways and Means or the Senate Ways and Means or Conference Committee. We'll watch those numbers. Hopefully they'll stay the same or they'll go up. That's the cherry sheet numbers. Our receipts this year, revenue sources, in addition to local aid, in addition to the tax levy, we've reduced the estimated receipts in anticipation of a, a slower economic environment this year. So we've programmed that in as well. As always, Mary does an excellent job at being conservative in terms of our revenue sources. We do not anticipate using any money from our stabilization account this year. We have a balance of $634,761. We're told that's a very healthy amount. However, we don't have to use it, the rainy day fund yet this year, which I, I think is, is good. I went over our free cash usage in terms of what we intend to raise this year via property tax. This year's levy limit base for fiscal year twenty-two is $12,406,764. We're well within the confines of the proposition two and a half law. And we propose to raise $11,790,782 off the property tax levy. And that leaves us with $615,982 as excess levy capacity. So we are not taxing to the max. We are being judicious in our ability to tax our residents as well. That is also a healthy number. That brings us to a total budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two of $16,455,619. The estimated tax rate for this year, once we include the Husick Valley High School exclusion override of $620,000, is estimated at this point with a commercial shift of $22.92. And lastly, what does that mean for our residential taxpayers here? Are basing this on our fiscal year twenty-twenty-one assessments and the amount of $523 million, give or take, with a average single-family tax assessment on a home of $149,000 and utilizing the 15% shift that the board generally approves in September. We anticipate that the average single-family tax bill for fiscal twenty-two will be $3,416 and that'll be a marginal increase of $71 from last year. So that's the big overview of the budget for fiscal twenty-two. We've worked hard to be able to make sure that our budget numbers are sharp. We're able to provide the level of services that our constituents ask for and at the same time be reasonable in our ability to, to tax.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate the overview. I thought it would be important for the board to just hear kind of where things are at with the budget currently and to also have the budget in hand prior to the budget workshops, which are scheduled to start April thirteenth. So I did email the board a number of dates of when those workshops would be held. I did not hear that there were any conflicts. So those were moved forward to the finance committee and they are putting those on their calendars. Just as a reminder to the board, those workshops will, will be combined with the finance committee as we have done in the last few years. And we are looking to hold those meetings in person. We felt it was important for all of us to, to try to do this in person. And we are making the arrangements to hold these at Memorial School in the gymnasium, where everybody would have their own table and chair. They would be spaced accordingly. All members of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee will be asked to wear their mask at all times. However, we think it's still important for us to be in the room. So those dates are going to be Tuesday, April thirteenth, Thursday, April fifteenth, Tuesday, April twentieth, and Monday, April twenty-sixth, all of those meetings starting at 6:00 PM. And there will be a Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, meeting at 6:00 PM to hopefully vote on the budget. That will be again combined with the finance committee. All leading up to a June town meeting. Right now, we are looking at a June twenty-first town meeting, but that is a date that will be set by the Board of Selectmen at a future meeting. So at this point, are there any questions about this brief overview and the schedule as it's been presented? Again, this was to just give everybody a, a little bit of an overview of where we are with the budget. Give everyone time to digest the information before we go into workshops. And as Jay mentioned, the finance committee will be getting their budget books on Monday when they meet.
We're, we're going to attempt to meet that goal. That's, I, I think it's important for everyone to understand that. Mary is not in five days a week. Mary is only working basically one day a week. Crystal's in three days a week. This is her first time through. We want to be sure that the data that we have that everyone looks at and studies is, is accurate. So we're going to do our best to get this done for Monday. And then Deb has the, the project of actually making those very nice dark blue binders and well organized for everyone. So that's about 20 binders, about 21, 22 binders that she has to put together and copy and print out, you know, a rather thick document. So we're going to do our best to get this information to everyone accurate. We, we have plenty of time. I just seek everyone's patience. As we go through that, we, we do have some staffing changes. So we're not as quick as we once were, but we will get this done. And our goal is to get you accurate information for your digestion as we move forward in the process.
Thank you. Rick, anything? John?
Yeah, it's just for clarification, the budget that Jay has described is the town administrator's budget. The budget subcommittee has worked with the town administrator and then the town treasurers. And we, to ensure that what is brought forward to the full board is a reasonable baseline for us as a full board to review. This is not a budget that the budget subcommittee is recommend, is recommending to the board. Our job was to ensure that the town administrator and the, the, the town treasurer are able to develop a budget that meets the needs, meets their needs. And also we did meet with the school committee and because they were going to vote on their budget. Prior to us beginning our review, we met with them and discussed what we thought the town could afford, representing our full board, but that, again, that can, it's up to the full board to make the final decisions. So this budget is a baseline. It, you know, is preliminary. It, it most likely will change. But the full board begins their deliberations at the workshop. So this is a baseline that we came up with, working with the town administrator. As our process indicates, the Board of Selectmen review the town administrator's budget. We, we go through each area through our workshops and then as the chair indicated, we will be voting on the final budget towards the end of April. And then the finance committee's role is they're going to be with us, you know, so we don't have to ask the same questions twice to the same people, which is a good, good way to do it. And then what they do, as we, I think most of us know, is they provide recommendations to the budget that we have approved, the Board of Selectmen, and then it was on the town, to town meeting vote in, in June. So I just want to make sure that we, I clarified those, those areas. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Joe?
I'll just reserve comment and questions when we entertain our workshops.
Okay. Sounds good. And I know that the town administrator would also be happy to answer any questions that you might have about his overview and leading up to those workshops. So feel free to ask him or set up a time to meet with him. Okay. That's it on the budget. And I think it brings us to announcements and good of the order. Rick, anything?
I have nothing.
John? John, anything for announcements? John, anything for announcements in good of the order?
Oh, sorry. Is Donna still on the phone on the line?
Yep, Donna is still here.
Uh Madam Chair, is it okay if I um just bring up some information about the mobile station that I just um came across? Just as information.
Certainly. Donna, are you still there? I think.
Yes.
Okay, yep.
All right, so I went back. Uh I know I mentioned in the past about um when we, when the um renovation was done at the Plunkett School, um the addition that was put on that I thought it was oil that they came across at the time, but I I I have an article in front of me from in the transcript from Tuesday, February fifteenth of nineteen ninety-four. And this was um several months after that they found a problem there. Um just wanna uh and I can get this uh forwarded to the town administrator, to the chair, to to disseminate to the board and to Donna that. And I'll see if there's any other articles I can come up with. Um but at the time, when they're they were uh digging uh for that, uh the addition to Plunkett School, it was actually gasoline contamination that was found. Um it was unearthed in April of nineteen ninety-three um when a backhoe shovel nicked a rock and created a spark, which in turn ignited the fuel migrating south in the soil and groundwater. Um so at at the time, to fix the problem, um the school committee had to pay eighty thousand dollars um spent on removing and testing the soil on the Plunkett uh addition site. Um there wasn't, the D E P at the time was gonna take over the investigation, I believe, but um they, it indicated that the mobile station, uh the preliminary investigation was a mobile station. A couple of farms was was most likely not responsible for the gas flowing down to the school property. Uh it might have been uh the Buster's Garage, um which is now the Redemption Center, but it, the article I have here, they had a company that was doing uh uh G Z A, Geo- Geo- Environmental Incorporated was uh was doing the investigation. Uh uh the D E P took over for them, uh but I just, you know, the question I would have, doesn't have to be answered now, is that 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 the uh soil was taken care of at the Plunkett site. Um I'm not, uh I would imagine that the gasoline leak was uh probably, they investigated, I would hope they would have stopped it at the time. Um but what if we have to, what if they do test and there's gasoline? I know we're gonna remove the tanks, but if there's gasoline that's still there on the mobile site, um you know, at the time, it was a pretty good lot size with the addition, it cost the school committee, which they didn't receive money back at the time. They they lost that money as part of their renovation, eighty thousand dollars um to uh correct what happened there, that uh if we, if gasoline is found in the um in the soil um that's there from the same leak, um hopefully it's been taken care of, I would imagine, what about? But I can look at more articles in the transcript from those days. Uh but that would be just a question I would have, that would that add cost if they did find gasoline in the soil? Would that, would that be removed if we're just gonna make a parking lot there? So I will forward on, oh, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I I I just wanted to um um say that um uh we were aware of that situation. I don't know if I have the exact article uh that you're referencing, but our consultant did have an article from um the early nineties um about the discovery. Um we have done, uh remember, we had set up as part of our assessment efforts uh up to now, we did uh eight test wells and we took samples from those eight wells. Only one uh of the wells um um showed any um any contamination. Um so this could just be residual around one of the tanks. Um unfortunately, I don't know of really, you're not going to really know the extent of it until you um uncover the tank. So we're aware of that. We're working with D E P and E P A. I think um they understand what the town is um trying to do and I think they'll work with us. Um and as um, you you know, member Novak mentioned, um we can uh als- always apply for additional funding for cleanup if that becomes necessary. I feel fairly confident that I think we'll be able to move forward with this uh with the funding that we have in place now.
Okay, it's great, Donna, to hear that uh that the company and yourself and the engineers are aware of this uh uh that this had happened, so that that uh is good news and uh it you, it seems to be well under control. So I I guess I'll just stop right there on that discussion. Um thank you. The next thing is um in regards to the um Biden administration and the trans- the possible uh transportation bill that um I noticed in the local news that the Board of Selectmen from Dalton were discussing some of the projects that uh um Representative Neal has sent out a request um to for communities to start to identify some, just in case this this transportation bill does ever get approved. Um and I know, Jay, you you're you're uh well into investigating uh some projects um that that are possible projects that could be used for that funding. So I would just uh request that, you know, as we get closer and if there, if that bill does get approved that or maybe prior to the submittal of the projects that that you uh discuss that with the Board of Selectmen at at a at a meeting.
Well, it's a constantly fluid and dynamic uh process here. There's not a lot of information about it. It's more than just transportation. And uh Donna and I met today with a few other uh people in the in the region to try to figure out exactly the best strategy. We uh we're trying to match up the projects that we have in town uh and try to line them up so we can, we can access, you know, funding. We don't wanna, we don't wanna shoot ourselves in the foot and not apply for the right project, for the right pot of money, et cetera. So I would anticipate a report on that at next Wednesday's uh meeting.
Yeah, that that's fine. Whatever you you feel you you're, you know, you're ready and you have all the information you need. I just would just like the board to be updated on that uh uh prior to submittal if possible.
Will do.
Thank you. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Joe, anything for announcements in good of the order?
Uh no, I have nothing.
Okay. All right, uh the only thing I have here is that we do have a meeting um next Wednesday, April seventh at seven P M. Um and it's looking to be a very full agenda at this time. Uh it looks like that will still be a remote meeting for this board. So please uh plan to participate remotely next Wednesday. With that, uh if there's nothing else to come before us.
Madam, Madam Chair, can I have one, can I have a rerun, please? Uh one more, one more thing. Um again, as as discussed in um other communities, um the discussion of opening the their town halls and I know uh maybe it is, I'm not sure which one that I wanna say, but they're looking at within the next few weeks to opening their town hall with with, of course, with specific guidelines, but um and I'm not saying we're ready to open our town hall, but um I'll just um, you know, again, Jay, when that, you know, when you, you know, kinda give us a uh when you, when you're ready, uh what your plan will be, um what your, what your plan might be of one, opening, reopening the 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 community, the town hall, library, et cetera. And again, I'm not saying it's gonna be soon for us, but just wanna, I've been seeing that uh happen a lot in the local, other other local communities, the discussion is happening and then I'll just uh, I'm sure you'll bring it forward when you, when you have a plan.
I I can tell you the discussion is happening and and I'm part of those discussions and the discussion is to keep our buildings closed because even though Adams, for example, is in the gray right now, we anticipate probably being in the yellow or red uh after the D P H calculates the numbers uh for this week. So most of the Berkshire County uh facilities are probably gonna remain closed. Uh and and again, I should say, we're available by appointment, but at least close to general public, but absolutely, we're gonna try to do it, John. I would say, you know, if we open one building, we're gonna, we're gonna do it uh all at the at the same time with the same protocol, remain consistently as as possible. So when we get close to that point, the board will be informed.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yep, and I just wanted to mention to the board that the uh Chair of the Board of Health has reached out and has asked for some time on our agenda for next Wednesday, the seventh, um to just talk to us, uh you know, a- about what's going on and um to continue to share uh tips to make sure that people are doing their part um to try to mitigate this. So um I know that there is some caution he is asking people to um to use um and to not get complacent and he'll speak more to that uh when Dr. Rhodes joins us next Wednesday. And that's going into the conversations as well about again, uh all town departments are are available. It is a very similar situation to what restaurants have in place and what um barber shops and hair salons. Uh we can't really go into any of those places without a reservation or an appointment, so um town hall is acting the same in that regard.
All right, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay. I think that there's nothing else to come before the board and with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
What's your new adjourn?
Thank you, Rick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Probably not. So this is a roll call vote, Rick?
Yes.
Uh John?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
We are officially adjourned at seven twenty-three P M. Thank you very much. Have yourselves a good night.